Welcome to the Tuesday, May twenty fifth, two thousand and twenty one, meeting of the Long Meadow School Committee. Per Governor Baker's orders, suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general law, chapter thirty A, section twenty. The public will not be allowed to physically access the school committee meeting. School committee is using the Zoom meeting platform to conduct this meeting. LCTV is live streaming, live streaming the meeting on channel twelve. A recording of the meeting will be posted to the LCTV YouTube channel as soon as possible after the meeting. Just a reminder that all votes while participating remotely must be made by roll call vote. We'll begin with the pledge of allegiance. It's Gianna's computer. Is yours connected to the headphones? Our first order is correspondence.
Thanks, Ryan. The following correspondence will be recorded. Emails from Ms. Bernadette Donerben, received on May sixth and May seventh, concerned about recess rules. An email from Lauren and Ryan Brady dated May sixth, offering concern over recess rules. An email from Ms. Lauren Brady dated May seventeenth, supporting the school committee decision to follow Governor Baker's updated mask guidance.
Thank you. Next up, we have our possible motion on minutes.
I move that the school committee approve the minutes for the May eleventh, two thousand and twenty one, school committee meeting as presented.
Second, thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. Brownman?
Yes.
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 Suzie?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
And yes for me, so that passes six zero. Next up, we have visitor comments.
We have one more.
Sorry. Oh, sorry, Kevin. Go ahead.
I move that the school committee approve the minutes for the May seventeenth, two thousand and twenty one, school committee meeting as presented.
Thank you. Third second.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. Brownman?
Yes.
Gianna?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Suzie?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
And yes for me. Again, that's six zero. Now we can move to visitor comments. If we have anyone online with us tonight who would like to make a comment, please make yourself known by meeting yourself or using one of the emoji reaction things. Seeing none, we will move on. School committee announcements and recognitions. Kevin?
Thanks, Ryan. Three for tonight. One, it really was a pleasure having the senior car parade the other night. It really was great seeing the seniors together outside celebrating. And it was fun having the alum tux lead the parade for the center school families. Two, really big shout out to everybody who made the Coach Divine naming ceremony possible. It was combined with the alumni track meet, and it was really a wonderful celebration and just a real joyous occasion. So thank you to everybody who made that possible. And then the final one, I just want to thank people who participated in the discussion on the equity audit. I was there for the evening session. I know Marty and Sue were there as well. And it was really, I think, a remarkable conversation. And it was, again, I thank Sue and Marty and everybody who made it possible to be in person. Because I just don't think we would have had as robust and rich a conversation if we were over Zoom. And so thank you, Sue, Marty, whoever else made that possible. I mean, I know Peter Bradshaw and Shelley Warren were there moderating, and it really was an excellent event. So thanks to everybody who made it possible.
Thank you, Kevin. Gianna?
Thanks, Ryan. I just wanted to appreciate and celebrate all of the students who ran for student body, student government. It's a very challenging and inspiring and, you know, difficult thing to do to put yourself out there like that. So I just wanted to congratulate and celebrate everybody who ran, win or lose, just great job.
Thank you. Seeing no others, I will add to wish luck and congratulate all the athletes that are going in a almost normal spring sports season. With some fan, I got to see a volleyball game the other day. Brownman was there also, or someone was a key factor in the victory for the, for the boys volleyball team, about eight people present. So good luck to all the athletes. We appreciate and hope it really gets back to normal soon. Next up, we have business with guests. Marty, you're up.
Thank you. Very pleased to make an introduction to the committee and to the community this evening. As everybody knows, Marie Pratt will soon move on to another well-deserved retirement. She was gracious and kind enough to step up and lead Wolf Swamp through an incredibly difficult year. And I'm so appreciative of everything that she's given this community, and she continues to work hard for us. And so to introduce to you, along with his future colleagues, Principal Hutton and Principal Steck, I'm super pleased to introduce to the committee and to the community, Mr. Jared Materis. Jared will assume the Wolf Swamp principalship starting July first. We put Jared through his paces. There was a few rounds of in-person interviews. We invited him to the school for a day. He met some staff. He met some parents. He met some students. And we all feel very great about the appointment, and we look forward to working with Jared. And Jared, I noticed you had the baby with you, and someone relieved you. But it would be okay if the baby wants to make a public appearance as well. So Jared, welcome to Long Meadow. We can't wait to get started with you.
Thank you very much. Thank you for the kind words. Yes, my wife is a saint. She heard the baby crying and came down and took him for me, so thank you to her. So great to meet you all, you know, I really appreciate the time tonight, you know, a few minutes. And I look forward to getting to work with all of you, getting forward to, looking forward to really working with the community and all the members. You know, I started my time in education as a professional. I moved up to be a physical education teacher in Springfield. And then I was a dean of students at Egremont Elementary School for a year. And before that, or after that, I became the principal at that same school, and I've been there. This will be my fifth year now. So I'm really, really excited, really happy to be coming to Wolf Swamp. One of the reasons really I wanted to make the change is, as you see, I have a young family at home. And I was driving an hour and a half each way to get to work every day, and that just wasn't feasible at this time anymore. And one of the things that really attracted me to Wolf Swamp is the real similarities between where I'm at now and where, and what Wolf Swamp is. You know, a great staff, a very dedicated families, and the students are fantastic. You know, I've heard nothing but great things, and my experiences so far have been absolutely amazing. You know, I've, I've already been in constant communication with all the admin staff. So I'm really, I'm really excited. I'm really honored to have this opportunity and to be a part of the Long Meadow community and the Wolf Swamp community and really serve your children the best that I can. And I'm excited to get started July first.
Jared, you'll have to tell us, tell everybody this story. The baby was born right in the midst of the interview process.
Yes.
And tell us how all that, how that lined up for you.
Yep, so we had, I think the first interview was maybe a week before their, our due date. And then we had Miles on April twelfth. And then I believe we came home from the, from the hospital on Thursday. I think we got home at about three. And I came to the second in-person interview at five thirty or something like that. Little sleep deprived these days, but it's all, it's all good.
Thank you so much. We're, we're very excited. I don't think the committee has any, any questions for Jared, if anything you want to get to know about him or his, his upcoming career at Wolf Swamp.
Interview process, so I got to hear Mr. Materis's answers. What does anybody else? Curious or have any questions or welcoming statements? Those are front two. Gianna?
Thank you, Ryan. Yeah, I just wanted to say thank you for joining us and welcome and all the, all the good stuff in between. But yeah, just to say thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. I'm very happy to be here.
Suzie?
I'll say the same. Thank you for stepping up and being willing to join our team and, you know, and looking over your resume. You've had a great experience. I grew up in the Berkshires, so I'm aware of the field and that work. So thanks for all of your dedication to children, and we welcome you off.
Thank you very much.
Brownman?
I also just wanted to welcome Jared. And I appreciate Mrs. Stack and Mrs. Hutton being here at the meeting. I think that they'll be amazing mentors for you. And just congratulations, and we look forward to meeting you in person.
Yes, thank you. Thank you to both of them as well. They've already been great mentors to me in the, in the short period of time I've been appointed. So huge thank you to all of you.
Nicole?
Just to extend the welcome, thank you very much for all your time and energy throughout this whole process, especially during such an exciting and sleep-depriving time in your life, and welcome aboard.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
All right, so congratulations, and I know this will be a great team because Dot and Andy do a great job. So we're looking forward to hearing from you in the coming school year.
Sounds good. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Jared.
Next up is update on health and safety guidelines.
Well, get us started. So some additional visitors, visitors with us tonight. Andy Frazier is the town COVID compliance officer, and he's a familiar face to the committee. Jennifer Siegel has joined the Board of Health specializing in contact tracing work. And they've been both great partners, and both have helped us make sense of the most recent recommendations and guidance that have come out of the federal government and the state government. And Jennifer and Andy agreed to update you on some recent COVID trends, vaccination rates, and then help us understand the most recent guidance that we've received. So we can turn it over to Andy and Jen.
Jen, do you want to do the, Jen, do you want to do the vaccine numbers first?
Yeah, absolutely. Can you guys hear me okay? Awesome. Okay, so the most recent report that Mass, or I guess DPH has put out, has not, it skipped a week. So every week I can pull a report that reflects counties as well as municipalities. So for instance, I can pull numbers reflecting very accurate data specifically for Long Meadow. And my theory is that they skipped a week last week because, you know, of the new age bracket, the twelve and up, that is applicable for the vaccine, and I will tell you why. Prior to them being applicable, the youngest age bracket that they parsed out is zero to nineteen. So what I do have to share with you is last update, it was last updated on May thirteenth. And so the age group zero to nineteen, as of then comprised of, well, eight percent of that population was fully vaccinated. Zero twenty to twenty nine percent, I'm sorry, twenty to twenty nine age bracket, forty six percent was fully vaccinated. Thirty to forty nine age group, fifty one percent, and then it just goes up. Fifty to sixty four age bracket is sixty percent. Sixty to seventy four age bracket, seventy nine percent, and then seventy five plus is at eighty one percent. So as a whole, the town is just above fifty percent vaccinated, which is fantastic. And the reason I did give you all of those age brackets is not just for the kids in the school system, but that also reflects your staff everywhere from your, your teachers to your nursing staff, et cetera. So this is great news. And I am waiting to see this Thursday to see if they are going to parse out perhaps twelve to age fifteen and what that data will look like. That's what I have so far for vaccinations. And then also to say, we have nobody in the school system that is positive for COVID right now, and only two residents in the whole entire town. So we are in the gray, not even in the green. So that's fabulous. Do you guys have any questions about that at all?
Anyone? Kevin?
I wonder if we know anything about the, our staff doesn't all live in Long Meadow. And I'm just curious if we're able to have any data on, on the staff. Thank you.
Sure. I specifically don't. We only have access to the May than database, which pertains, which is the database for all of Massachusetts. But as the local Board of Health of Long Meadow, we only have access to Long Meadow residents. I'm not quite sure if there's software in the school system, but.
So I can, I'll chime in. I could say anecdotally that our nurses would report that around seventy five or eighty percent of our staff have been fully vaccinated. We don't collect that data, to my knowledge, and sort of out of respect for staff privacy on that. That might be something that we'll need to sort of reconsider as we prepare for next year, but right now we don't have specific data on that.
Yeah, and just to follow up, I know this is a sticky subject, and I feel like rules around that are evolving rapidly. I know that at Smith, we've had some pretty heated conversations about whether that is a privacy issue or not a privacy issue. And I think that's going to evolve pretty quickly about whether we're able to ask or not, and whether that is an invasion of privacy or not. So I think my recommendation is just, and again, I know you do this, Marty, just to stay on top of this. Because I think if we are allowed to ask that question, the community would like to know. So anyway, I'm sure that will, that will evolve as everything else has. So thank you.
Thank you. Gianna?
Thanks, Ryan. I, Jennifer and Andy, but Jennifer, in terms of this, I just wanted to say thank you because I can't wrap my head around, you know, even one of the pieces of it. So we just appreciate that y'all are guiding us as superintendent noted. So thank you.
Sorry, I'm gonna meet myself. You're welcome. It's been a pleasure.
There are some communities, the larger urban districts, that have sponsored vaccination clinics for, for students, for children in the community. That is something that we've talked about briefly with our town health partners to see if that is needed right now. We feel like, you know, the, the trends are moving in the right direction, and, and we're seeing, you know, vaccination rates are, are positive for us. So we'll, we'll continue to talk to Chief Dearborn, Andy, and Jennifer about that, and whether or not that's, that's needed and necessary in the future. Andy, you want to take it from here and talk a little bit about the, one of those recent guidance?
Sure. Just to jump back to Kevin's question for a moment on, on the vaccination thing, you're absolutely right. It's a touchy subject. And I think a lot of it depends on which source you are trying to get your answer from. You can go to this legal website and get one answer, and go to another legal website and get a different opinion. And you're right, it's going to take time to work its way through the system. So as it pertains to, we've heard a lot about masking. And the one point I would like to make on masking is the piece of this that seems to get, to be getting lost in all of this is, I hear, we hear over and over daily, sometimes more than daily, well, after May twenty ninth, no one needs to wear a mask. And that just isn't true. The new guidance is for people who are fully vaccinated. People who are not fully vaccinated still need to wear a mask and still need to adhere to other restrictions. So that's, that's one of the hard parts on, on all of this. So let me, let me do it this way. Do people have a specific question on this?
Kevin?
Andy, I wonder if you could, you know, talk to us about the issue of, you know, somebody who says, I got COVID. It was a while ago. I consider that to be the same as vaccinated, so I don't have to wear a mask. Can you speak to that a little bit?
Well, the way it re is for people who are vaccinated, period. So you can't, a, a, and as you know, you can't force people to reveal that they're vaccinated. So I guess they would fall into the category of unvaccinated.
Do you mind if I jump in just for a moment here? Just to, to clarify that, not to clarify, but to be very specific with that topic. There is a ninety day, if somebody does say that, that my response would be, yes, there is a ninety day period from the end of your isolation from when you had COVID nineteen, where we would consider you to have immunity. Thereafter, you are just as susceptible to pick up the virus, be affected by the virus, and to spread the virus if you are not vaccinated. So to have gone through and recovered from COVID nineteen is not create any type of immunity past the ninety days and is not of the same type of protection at all as any of the vaccinations. Does that help?
That's perfect. And I just was hoping for people who are watching this to hear that if you got COVID, you need to go get vaccinated.
Right. And to add on to what Jennifer just said with the vaccination, at least for right now, there is no time limit going out from the time you've been fully vaccinated versus your question where it's ninety days. So now, each situation that comes along, you actually have to look at a calendar. Okay, where, you know, where are you now? And nobody wants to get into that.
Any other questions? Suzie?
Yes, thank you. I, and thank you both for, for joining us and answering these questions. There was a document that was provided that indicated that on May twenty ninth, inside schools, masking regulations will stay the same. There's a sub-bullet that says, as this pertains to the school system and school events, in quotes, in alignment with state guidance, the gathering limits for school events with outside participants will be lifted. And then in red, there is all other health and safety measures for school events, such as masking, distancing, and other protocols outlined in DESI's supplemental guidance for student groups and school events for school year two thousand and twenty, two thousand and twenty one will still apply. So I'm, I'm not, I, I'm trying to understand. So is that essentially saying that the gathering limits are changing and everything else stays the same as masking, distancing, and other protocols? I, I was confused by this, that's all, and, and what it pertained to.
So you're right, there is, there are those two documents, like the one you just referenced, May twenty ninth, making specific reference to supplemental guidance issued from DESI. And that document was revised on April first. So for those situations, we would, the school system would be following those or that document.
And, okay, sorry.
Oh.
So those situations are speaking to things like prom, non-athletic clubs. So things that are events that are happening indoors that would involve outside school participants. So, so then you would revert back to the quote-unquote older regulations in the, in the mentioned document in that timeline. Whereas all of the other regulations pertaining to school events, et cetera, will be revised, not, not lifted, but revised after the twenty ninth. Yeah, those, those simply, I understand that is confusing, especially hearing it aloud. I did write that, so I do take responsibility, but hearing it, it is very confusing. But all it really is, it just means those events that are outlined in that guide, and it would have just been a very long document if I listed all of them, are exempt from these new lifted regulations that will be outlined by DESI after May twenty ninth. And again, it's just, if it's going to be on school property and inside, and it has to do with, you know, participants coming from outside of the school population and outside of the school, let's just call pod, then it will revert back to those guidelines from early twenty twenty one and twenty twenty. Does that help? I guess you would have to see the guidelines to make it crystal clear, but is that on the way to making it sound like you?
Maybe could we just boil it down to the, I think, the thing that's mostly on people's minds is graduation. And right now, we've got more ability to have that overflow crowd at graduation. We, the graduates generally will be seated with family members, but at fifth grade step-up events, at eighth grade graduation, we'll be able to accommodate more visitors than we thought we would have because of the, the changes to the graduation guidance. So that's great news. The only limitations kind of relate to. The only limitations kind of relate to things like parking and, and space available for attendees. But we will be able to accommodate visitors at graduation more than we had thought. So that's great news.
It's wonderful news and that's because it's, it's being held outside.
Yeah.
So everything that we're referencing right now that is on the confusion table is inside.
Thank you.
Yes, I have a follow-up, just, yes, and so non-athletic events that are held inside is what you're referring to. Okay, so if, so just to be clear, if a club wanted to have a gathering outside and they wanted parents to attend or outside groups to attend, then the, the, they could, that would be fine. There, there wouldn't be any restrictions there about it. Okay. But if, if there was an in, so I guess what I'm trying to understand is, if everything's been lifted on the athletics, and maybe this is where I'm missing something. Have we lifted everything on athletics indoors as well? So like, because MIAA just changed their guidance.
So indoor, indoor athletics are still subject to restrictions on attendance and masking.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, yeah.
Depending on sport risk level, but yes.
I just wanted to make sure there's equity and fairness, you know, in addressing both experiences, co-curricular experiences.
Any other questions? Okay, I don't see any. Is that all for the update? All right, thank you both for coming, we appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Next up Marty, is the super support?
Kevin mentioned a couple of things that I wanted to mention, which was the Equity Audit Public Forum that we held. It was well attended in the evening. We had a nice, smaller conversation in the morning under the tent outside the high school. And so it gave us some good feedback on how the recommendations that were identified in the report might be implemented. And so we'll compile those recommendations and provide that feedback to the whole committee so that you'll hear some of the feedback that we received from the, from the wider community. And I would also echo what Kevin said earlier about the event for naming the track after John Devine. It was one of the highlights of the year for me. See our student body, the recent graduates, the coaches, the administrators that were there to pay tribute to John. It was a special, special day under bright blue skies and, and without a lot of the restrictions that we've seen this year. I also mentioned the committee that had a chance to attend the Select Board last week to go over the Colliers Facilities Condition Assessment Report with the Select Board. Gave them that information in preparation for a decision that they'll have to make on our SOIs to the MSBA, the Statements of Interest on our two middle schools, which is on your agenda later on. That's it.
Thank you. Next up is the Chair Report, and I have the pleasure of mentioning that very often we have the committee get to work with some of the best and brightest from Long Meadow High School. We have our student representative, Maxim, is in his last meeting this evening. So Maxim, here's your certificate, they will get the whole to you, but I'm gonna read it to you. The Long Meadow School Committee presents this certificate to you for outstanding performance and lasting contribution to the Long Meadow Public Schools as the student representative to the school committee, October 2020 to May 2021. Given this day, the 25th of May 2021. So Maxim, we appreciate the effort. We've had some very long meetings over the year. Tonight looks like it could be another one. And you always stick with us and give us great information about what's going on at the high school. You represent your classmates well, and we appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
Just have anything else they want to add to that? Thank you, or maybe just thumbs up, claps, you got a lot of emojis. Next up, Maxim is your report.
Yes. So as the year goes up, there isn't much I've been getting from clubs. Must have been wrapping up, doing elections for their positions and planning for next year. But I did want to speak shortly about the senior class. As many of you know, it had its last day of school today, which was very exciting. I don't want to stay exclusive. Seniors last Saturday also participated in a car parade, as members mentioned, as many of you saw and heard. This was organized and funded by parents and was a very fun event that seniors enjoyed and were very thankful for all the parents that took the time to organize. Seniors are looking forward to next week's Senior Social, which includes your book signing. We are also going to have the batch ice cream truck pizza. This has been generously paid for largely by the class of 2015. They sent us some of their STEAD money, as well as the, the school. And we very much appreciate all the work Mr. Dunkley and other faculty and staff have put into organizing this for us. And then we obviously have our graduation next week at the field, so that's quite exciting as well. That's really it.
Thanks Maxim. How about one more question? When is it that you are leaving for Belgium?
Towards the end of August.
End of August, great, that'll be exciting. Congratulations and thank you again for all the hard work. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Subcommittee reports, nothing from finance, so we move on to policy.
Diana, would you like me to take this? All right. So you have a few policies that have been out for public review that are ready for your final consideration and vote. And those policies are BEA, which clarifies and sort of simplifies the language on the scheduling of school committee meetings. You have policies relating to the enrollment of homeless students, military children and foster children. And those policies have been out for public review. We have not received any public comment, so those are ready for your vote. And perhaps that might be a good place to pause as those are policies that are, are set and have already been reviewed by Policy Sub and briefly described to the committee at past meetings. So we could stop there and, and have you deliberate and vote on those policies. And Diane, if you can walk us through what you need in terms of the vote by the committee and the minutes and that kind of thing.
There is a recommended motion and they are in the agenda.
So anyone wants to make the motion, we can then get to discussion if there's any?
I move on the recommendation of the Policy Subcommittee that the school committee approved the amended school committee policies. JFABD, homeless students, enrollment rights and services. JFABE, educational opportunities of military children. JFABF, educational opportunities for children in foster care. And BEA, regular school committee meetings as presented.
Sir, sir.
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. Bronwyn?
Yes.
Fiona?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Suzie?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
And yes for me, a motion passes seven zero.
Next up is Policy EBCFA, and this is your face mask policy, which the Policy Subcommittee recently considered and has brought forward a recommended addition to that, a recommended change to that. It simply clarifies that masks need to continue to be worn in school buildings. It removes the requirement that masks be worn on school grounds, but does clarify that staff members would need to continue to wear masks outdoors if distancing cannot be maintained. And so it's reflective of the latest DESI guidance. And it is a policy that will carry us forward until the feds or the state changes the face mask requirements again at some point. But this, for that, this will carry us at least through the conclusion of the school year. So that's file EBCFA face masks.
A motion, we can have a discussion.
I can take that one, Ryan, if you want. I move on the recommendation of the Policy Subcommittee that the school committee approve the revised policy EBCFA face masks and waive the 30-day posting requirement of the policy BGB, policy adoption.
It's their second.
Second.
Questions? Suzie? Any?
There's also a stricken clause, furthermore, face masks may not be required when appropriate social distancing can be enforced during physical education classes and while outside. Can you explain why?
Sure, that, that was in your original policy that was developed back in August. It gave us some flexibility that we actually never exercised to perhaps not have students wear face masks during physical education classes. Ultimately, we, we did follow the, the practice that was out there with the advice that we got from town officials, which was to have students wear face masks at all times, even during PE and while outside. And so to strike that sentence that Suzie mentioned, brings it in line with the paragraph up above, which says that, which amends the policy to note that masks don't have to be worn on school grounds comprehensively. It's just inside school buildings for students.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
Yep, I had just a quick question. So just, just for everybody listening, so as, as the state continues to change, you know, for example, you know, you're going to be able to walk into Big Y on Sunday and not have to wear a mask. And as, as those change, we're going to adapt policies as, as quick as that? You know, for a few, it's just a statement. I'm assuming that's what we're going to continue to do as things continue to change before the end of this year and continue to adapt our policy. Correct?
Yes, I, I'd say if I could answer, certainly we always want to be responsive to the latest and greatest guidance. So the answer is yes. I don't anticipate that the guidance for schools will change further. When we hit May 29th, the date that we talked a little bit about tonight, that won't change this policy at all. We still need students and staff to wear masks indoors and staff would still have to wear masks outside if they can't distance. So this will carry us through the rest of the year, I would anticipate it. I don't expect that there'll be any new or different guidance for schools between now and the end of the school year.
Bronwyn?
I just had a quick question. Did DESI state that even if the teachers are outside, like PE teachers or teachers monitor in recess, even though the kids take their masks off, the teachers still have to wear them?
Correct, yes, yes.
Hopefully, maybe I'll think that.
Um, yes, I think, so when we say on school grounds, does that mean, you know, when students are being dropped off and when they're leaving school grounds? And that, that also, this also applies to those experiences, correct?
Correct, so when they're not in the school building, they would not be required to wear masks. So once they enter the building, they do, but from the point from the curb to the door, they don't have to wear a mask, although we're finding that a lot of children are wearing it for convenience, right, when they get off, off the, out of the car or off the bus. And then our principals have made it clear that we want to be respectful of any families, any students that continue to choose to wear a mask. So this, you know, I think it's, everybody has a different comfort level. This identifies what is required though.
And is there, I think it might help clarify if we, vaccinated individuals who are not staff, who are, you know, perhaps outside waiting for children, do they need to wear masks?
I think Andy is still with us on the call, but we would be following the, that's the recommendation, as I understand it, for adults that they, if they're not vaccinated, they need to continue to wear a mask. I think in terms of what's, what's realistically enforceable, we would still expect that people would follow the CDC recommendation, but in terms of what we can enforce with this policy, that, that wouldn't be included.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So I just want to, I'm re-asking Bronwyn's question to make sure I understand. The line in here is staff members must wear masks outdoors when distancing cannot be maintained, which would mean if they could maintain it, they could remove a mask. As long as they're far enough away from anybody else. But if you're doing bus duty and short bike kids or car line, sorry, car, bus duties, my school, car line and you have all those kids around you, you're gonna wear your mask. Correct? Okay, great. Any other questions? Seeing none, I will call for a vote. Bronwyn?
Yes.
Jan?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Suzie?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
And yes for me.
Thank you, and I know Diane will send that out to the full staff tomorrow. And then you have two policies that came out of Policy Sub that have been amended and brought forward to the full committee, and they will be posted to the district's website and out for public comment for the next 30 days. One relates to background checks, Policy ADDA. And this simply, it's, it's really a housekeeping cleanup on this policy to make it clear that we do not accept suitability determinations from other organizations or other districts. In other words, we review background checks ourselves here in Long Meadow and make the determination ourselves whether or not that person is suitable for employment in this district. And so there was some language that was in the policy that, that contradicted that practice and was not in line with a vote that the committee had, a school committee had taken on this back in 2014. So that is out for public comment. And then also out for public comment is File JF, which is your school admissions policy. Essentially, it cross-references the enrollment policies relating to the enrollment of military children, foster children and homeless children. And it's to put everyone on notice that we need to move to enroll children in those situations immediately. And so it's, it's a good, it actually came out of a DESI review. They had gone through our policies and recommended that we have that language in Policy JF. So that is out for public review and it will come back to the committee in a month or so.
Next up is our ongoing business, Statements of Interest Middle Schools. I'm sorry, what's the, you muted.
I think we missed the last two subcommittees. I know there's, it says no report, but I believe.
Oh, I forgot. I looked at it 10 seconds ago and said, oh, Colin Bronwyn, and then I forgot. So terribly sorry. Next up is, unless curriculum has something, it says no report.
Schedule a meeting at some point, before the end of the year.
Thank you. Bronwyn, Eval Sub Report?
Thank you. I'll send an email to everyone reiterating all this information, but just so the public is aware. Dr. O'Shea will provide reflection and relevant artifacts to the school committee by Thursday, June 3rd. Diane will send the evaluation forms on Thursday, June 3rd as well. The forms are due back to Diane from all the school committee members by Friday, June 11th. Eval Subcommittee will meet on Tuesday, June 15th to compile and synthesize the individual documents and provide a final evaluation report that the committee will vote on at our final meeting on June 21st. Thank you.
Thank you. As Bronwyn mentioned, she's going to send a clarifying email with all this, but does anyone have any questions at this? Questions at this time that they feel they need to have answered? We've all been through this, so I think we understand the process, just want to make sure. All right. Great report Bronwyn, no questions. Now on to ongoing business, middle schools.
Hey, as promised, we have prepared new statements of interest, uh, for our two middle schools. These would be submitted to the M S B A, the Mass School Building Authority, uh, by the deadline at the end of June. And so you have a, a couple of Word document files that, um, kind of comprehensively. Identify some of the challenges that we're facing, uh, the fields that are in that document are prescribed by the M S B A. Ultimately, we entered this information into a M S B A. Portal, so it doesn't get submitted as a, as a single PDF or a Word document, it gets submitted. Uh, into the, into the portal that we will, uh, open up next week. There is some very specific vote language that is required by the M S B A. If these statements of interest are, uh, to be voted on. So, and I would thank, uh, Mr. Mazza for, uh, his work on these two files. Uh, largely it updates the previous SOIs. Uh, but I think it's, it's sort of a leaner, somewhat leaner application than in the past. The strength of our application this year, I think, relates to the completion of that facilities condition assessment report with Colliers. And we would be sure to submit that full report to the M S B A so that they can see. That we've identified, uh, hundreds of of maintenance and repair projects. That, if you recall, uh, were totaled at about thirty million dollars for the the two buildings. And that was sort of, again, just sort of straight maintenance and repair projects. That that would not necessarily bring the buildings up to twenty first century, uh, standards. Uh, so for your consideration are the statements of interest, uh, for the, uh, application to the M S B A?
Are we good? Nobody has any question?
And I, okay. Having convened in an open meeting on May twenty fifth, twenty twenty one, prior to the S O I submission closing date. The school committee of Town of Long Meadow, in accordance with its charter, bylaws and ordinances. Has voted to authorize the superintendent to submit to the Massachusetts School Building Authority. The statement of interest form dated May twenty fifth, twenty twenty one. For the Glenbrook Middle School located at one hundred and ten Cambridge Circle, Long Meadow, Mass. Massachusetts, which describes and explains the following deficiencies in the priority categories for which an application may be submitted to the Massachusetts. School Building Authority in the future replacement or renovation of a building. Which is structurally unsound or otherwise in a condition seriously jeopardizing the health and safety of schoolchildren. Where no alternative exists. Replacement, renovation or modernization of school facility systems such as roofs, windows, boilers. Heating and ventilation systems to increase energy conservation and decrease energy related costs in the school facility. Replacement of or addition to obsolete buildings in order to provide for a full range of programs consistent with state. And approve local requirements and hereby further specifically acknowledges that by submitting this statement of interest form. The Massachusetts School Building Authority in no way guarantees the acceptance or the approval of an application. The awarding of a grant or any other funding commitment from the Massachusetts School Building Authority. Or commits the town to filing an application for funding with the Massachusetts School Building Authority.
Second. Question on the motion regarding, go ahead, Jan?
Sorry, thank you Ryan. And thank you Superintendent Tom for doing all the work on this, mine was just a wording question Ryan, is that okay? So where it says, um, down at the bottom on page three, where it says. Replacement, renovation or modernization of school facility systems such as roofs, windows. Boilers, heating and ventilation systems can increase. Energy conversa- conversation, conservation and decrease energy related costs in the school facility. Does the such as limit us just to those described herein? Or could it be something like? Facility systems including but not limited to? Just because there were so many things. I just don't want the wording to limit us to those.
The specific vote language is provided to us by the M S B A. And so you really have to follow verbatim the language that they provided. Our, our job was to identify from a list that's provided, uh, key priorities. And so if you look at one of the statements of interest, maybe on the fourth page. Uh, there is a list of the eight potential priorities. That you could identify, that you could choose from, and so we selected priorities one, five. And seven with the SOIs, and so the the verbiage that. That was read as part of the motion comes directly from the M S B A.
And we did have a second, we did have a second on that Diane, right? Okay. Any other questions on, uh, the Glenbrook motion? Seeing none, I will call for a vote, Bronwyn? You didn't unmute, are you having computer problems? Diane, did you hear, yeah, mute, uh, yes, or?
I heard her, I heard her.
Fantastic. Gianna?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Suzie?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
And yes for me, that motion passed to the seven zero, Suzie?
Having convened in an open meeting on May twenty fifth, twenty twenty one, prior to the S O I submission closing date. The school committee of the Town of Long Meadow, in accordance with its charter, bylaws and ordinances, has voted to authorize the superintendent. To submit to the Massachusetts School Building Authority, the statement of interest form dated May twenty fifth, twenty twenty one. For the Williams Middle School located at four ten William Street, Long Meadow, Mass, Massachusetts. Which describes and explains the follow, following deficiencies in the priority categories. For which an application may be submitted to the Massachusetts School Building Authority in the future. Replacement or renovation of a building which is structurally unsound or otherwise in a condition seriously jeopardizing the health. And safety of schoolchildren where no alternative exists. Replacement, renovation or modernization of school facility systems such as roofs, windows, boilers. Heating and ventilation systems to increase energy conservation and decrease energy related costs in the school facility. Replacement of or addition to obsolete buildings in order to provide for a full range of programs. Consistent with state and approved local requirements and hereby further specifically acknowledges that by submitting this statement of interest form. The Massachusetts School Building Authority in no way guarantees the acceptance or the approval of an application. The awarding of a grant or any other funding commitment from the Massachusetts School Building Authority. Or commits the town to filing an application for funding Massachusetts School Building Authority.
Is there a second?
Second.
Are there any questions on the motion regarding Williams Middle School? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote, Bronwyn?
Yes.
Gianna?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Suzie?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
And yes for me, seven zero. Next up Marty is Challenge Success.
So Challenge Success is an organization that we have partnered with, uh, in the past, I think it was. Twenty, oh, oh yeah, sorry.
Point of order, it looks like this, um, item is on the agenda twice.
Oh.
And it looks, I I think it would be best suited under new business.
Yes, yeah, thank you. Good catch.
Uh, mute myself, okay, so. Parking fees, checking to make sure that's not on twice, so parking fees is ongoing business. You want to mention that Marty?
Sure, uh, and Tom, I'd maybe ask you to help out on this, so we have a thirty dollar parking fee. Our, our student advisory panel asked us to, uh, consider. Uh, revising that downward to eliminating it, and I think it was briefly talked about at finance sub. I think the conclusion was to bring it to the whole committee for consideration. Uh, it annually generates, uh, around four thousand dollars or so in revenue. And so if the committee chose to waive that in the coming year, it wouldn't create. A giant revenue hole for us, I think it's something that we could, uh, plan around. But it is for your consideration. Tom, is there anything you'd want to add, anything I missed there?
Uh, we just had that, uh, the fee has to be used towards the high school parking lot, so. Um, it's not necessarily budgeted in next fiscal year, uh, we, in the past, we've used the money to offset. Cost of maintenance, lining, snowfalling and the like related to the, the high school parking lot, but.
We can't hear Tom, sorry.
Oh, sorry. Can you hear me? No?
So I'll do my best to.
Thank you.
Restate what Tom said, that the, uh, parking fees go into a revolving account, the expectation is that those fees be. Applied back towards the maintenance and upkeep of the parking lot.
So I have a question out of that, is, is the maintenance of the parking lot unnecessary? And how creative can you get with the phrase maintenance of the parking lot? To include maybe improving the grounds surrounding the parking lot? So really my question is, is there's work that needs to be done that we're now not gonna have the dedicated money for? Should this be eliminated?
Can you hear me? Yes, um, I mean, the fact that the lot is new and in relatively good shape. Um, I know the students at one point talked about making some changes to the drop off. There's also a proposal to change the exit and the horseshoe so that it forced people to go one way or the other. Um, those funds could be used towards offsetting the costs related to any type of changes. Uh, I also know the terraces, uh, at times can get overgrown. Um, and that maintenance is a responsibility of the Department of Public Works. Uh, I don't know that the money we bring in is significant enough to offset or to add additional resources towards those. Uh, maintenance costs, but it has been used for the occasional lining, which is needed every few years to. To repaint the lines and so forth, but, um, you know, there's about fifteen thousand dollars that's accumulated since the last time. Funds have been used towards, uh, the maintenance D P W provides for the parking lot.
Jamie?
Yes, just a general question, so is, is the D P W required to maintain? Except if there's a pothole, is the D P W required of the town, or does that have to come from us?
No, they, they do provide maintenance services, Jamie, ongoing, if there's an issue related to a defect or some hazard in the parking lot. We don't necessarily have ongoing costs every year.
Got it, so we can use this money as almost like ad hoc, where if we see something that isn't maybe up to par. That the town maybe isn't handling as quickly as what we would want, we can jump in and utilize this kind of work.
Kevin?
Um, I wonder if you could speak to why we're charging students to maintain the high school parking lot? When we have five other parking lots that we don't charge anybody to maintain?
Uh, I think I, I think it goes back to the history of how the fee came up, um, years ago. Prior to this building existing, there were limited spaces for students. Um, and in order to accommodate the, uh, demand, an additional. Uh, area was paved to add for parking for students. And it also, um, because there was a higher demand than there were available slots, a lottery was held in the old building. Um, I think since then, it's kind of carried on to help maintain who's authorized to be parking in here. Gives away for the high school administration to kind of have a list of what cars are, uh. Um, approved to be here on, on campus. But with the new lot, there is ample parking space available for, uh, the number of students, um, I don't know that we've ever. Exceeded capacity during a regular school day, uh, in terms of parking for staff and students. So that's probably the best I can say in terms of, uh, how it's come about over the years.
Could you remind everyone Tom, how we compare to the comparable surrounding districts as far as parking and parking fees?
I believe back when the school committee, um, reduced the rate, uh, back around twenty seventeen or sixteen. Um, I would say it's, it's in line with, um, other suburban communities. In terms of what we charge it, uh, annual, uh, fee.
Any other questions, Maxim, go ahead.
Yes, I, I just want to, I guess, speak to this issue, given that I brought it up. So, uh, my argument for, uh, the removal of the parking pass payments, and not necessarily parking passes. I think it'd make sense to have a list of what cars should be parking at the, uh, parking lot daily, that can still continue, I think. Uh, but it doesn't stem from some exorbitant cost, and obviously other schools also have a cost, if not more. This is my first journalism story, actually, when I, uh, when I wrote for the Judge Otter, uh, Mr. Mazza was my first interview for that story. Um, it's something that's near and dear, uh, but frankly, I think it's very well understood, uh, by most students that, um. To drive, that drive cars, uh, that it's an expensive privilege. Uh, and thirty dollars is not a lot compared to the close to two hundred dollars that we had in the past. That was obviously, we had a whole different system, as Melas mentioned, we had a different parking lot. Um, and it's even cheaper than a tank of gas for me right now, for thirty dollars. But at the same time, uh, my issue with it stems from the lack of consistency in which this, uh, user fee is being applied. Uh, to my knowledge, there's no other parking lot in Long Meadow where there is a user fee. Um, this is a public parking lot, uh, just the students use it, so do teachers, parents, visitors. Uh, just as they would use any other public parking lot, uh, in town. It feels wrong that this user fee, uh, which I understand is used for maintenance, so the line redrawns, but it's now I understand that the D P W could still do. Day to day maintenance, which they're required to do anyway, uh, without this fee, uh, if I understand that correctly. Uh, it feels wrong that it's, it's applied only to students, uh, while many other people also enjoy the benefit that this parking lot brings to the town. Uh, I think this parking lot should be up kept with the same funds that any other pub, uh, public parking lot, uh, is in the town. The ones, uh, at the other schools, the community center, the police station, D P W, so on, to maintain with. Uh, again, the cost isn't large and it's not the greatest issue, but it does seem as a matter of principle, uh, wrong. How this, uh, fees apply exclusively to students.
Thanks Maxim, I think I saw Kevin and Jamie with their hands up, do yourself a question, Jamie, go ahead.
I do, Kevin can go first, he raised it first.
Thanks Jamie, I, I'm just curious if the finance subcommittee had a position on this.
I can get, I, I don't think we ever came to a single position on this. I can give you my opinion on it, um, as, as an individual, um. I, I don't like in any, um, whether it's school committee, whether it's corporations, whatever it is, pinpointing one specific. User fee, I always come back to a higher level where we shouldn't be just picking and choosing what we have issues with. We should look at this holistically.
We should look at this holistically of all the fees that we're charging and going, you know, overall, look at these fees and come back to them. I feel like we keep pigeonholing all these fees, whether it's the preschool program, whether it's the, you know, this particular fee, whether it's the athletic fees. Um, I don't think we have a very consistent approach. Um, I am not a big fan of changing this right now. Because I, I don't really like just, you know, looking at it just this one thing. Cause I think Maxim makes a great point. So I mean, it's a great question, but, you know, there's a whole ton of other fees. Well, why, you know, why doesn't girls softball not get to pay or baseball? Or, you know, they can probably come here and justify why they should get lower fees or why the preschools program should get lower fees. I, I really think we should take this back to finance sub, look at every single fee that we're not getting from the general fund or from some sort of grant. And going, what's appropriate and come back and say, hey, we should adjust this, this, and this. Um, yeah, we're going to reduce down the, I'm hypothetical, we're going to reduce down the parking because it doesn't make sense. But we're going to increase the sporting fees because those are too low, um, comparatively. I, I don't like just doing this kind of one, kind of willy nilly is what it feels like. So it's my two cents on it. Or more than two cents.
Any other questions or comments? Well, Tom, I have a question about the, you said it's up to about fifteen grand, the account. How many years is that?
So the last time, uh, there was an appropriation was in twenty seventeen. It was about forty seven thousand dollars. But understanding there was a balance that was carried forward from years of collection. So, um, as the superintendent indicated, we bring about four thousand dollars a year. So it's, um, basically been over the last few years replenishing that balance.
Jamie?
Okay, well, just two more comments. Um, there's two places in town I drive by very regularly. They're, uh, honestly, to me, very embarrassing as I drive by. High school is one of them. It looks, uh, awful out front. Um, maybe like, it sounded like what Ryan was alluding to is, hey, maybe we should spend some of this money to actually make the school look more presentable. Um, the second school I drive by regularly that maybe should be using some of this money is Williams. It barely ever gets cut. It looks, uh, awful. And, you know, it, it, it relates back to the sidewalks, the condition of the roads there too. Um, that's why I'm, I'm not in favor of getting rid of it because I, I, I don't like just picking one. Um, you know, there's obviously use for this money as you drive by our schools and the condition that they're in. Um, you know, fifteen grand could go a long way.
Brandon?
Is that what the fees do pay for the, um, making this school, like, not the parking lot, but the actual grounds, the grass, mulch, bushes, areas that are super overgrown, would, would this pay for that? Or is it just strictly for the parking lot?
I mean, I would say it would be used towards the parking lot. Uh, last time, as I indicated, it was for sweeping, uh, snow removal and lining are the costs that were incurred against the appropriation back in twenty seventeen.
So, I get it. Um, if it's not going to, um, if it's already part of the DPW budget to have the grounds done, um, which, you know, like, as Jamie said, maybe we could, um, look into how we can improve certain areas. But if it's not part of, of that, um, I mean, Maxim does bring up some good points, you know, like, how do we pay for the Blueberry Hill parking lot? Is, you know, obviously, students can't drive to school. I realize it's smaller, but, um, I guess it technically isn't really equitable. Um, so I'm just wondering if we do, um, if we do need it.
Oh, sorry. Kevin?
I mean, I think the, the points about maintenance are, are important ones. And, I mean, to me, I think it's an opportunity with a new Department of Public Works director that we should invite him here to a, a meeting and talk about these issues. I, I think we're talking about two different things. I think the money for the parking lot is very limited in what we can do with it. The issues of the grounds are completely separate, and I don't think the money we have in that account has any impact on the real issues of what the grounds look like. Uh, and to me, this seems like an unfair targeting of the students. Um, and personally, I fully support what Maxim is saying. It's a public parking lot. It's already been paid for. Why are we charging students to park in a lot? It, it just seems unfair.
Maxim, and then Gianna?
Can I, uh, just ask, so if there was no parking fee, would our s- snow not get cleared? It says that the part of it goes to snow removal. Uh, other parking lots have snow cleaned. Is it, it doesn't give us priority or, uh, how, how do we contribute to snow removal of that money?
I think it, it offset the cost in that one year that we actually had an appropriation related to, uh, the maintenance from the town. So it's not every year that we're spending money on, on the maintenance.
So, so if there was no, uh, fee, they would still clear our snow, correct? Alright.
Gianna, I believe you're next.
Thanks, Ryan. I just wanted to, um, to point out that some of the students who are parking and, and, and driving and parking to school aren't necessarily doing that just because they think it's cool and fun. Some of them have, um, real responsibilities that they have to get to right after school. Maybe a job that helps pay for stuff that they otherwise wouldn't be able to pay for. Maybe it's taking care of their younger siblings. Um, there are some financial hardships and, uh, serious responsibilities for some students who drive to school. And I would hate to see them, you know, having to choose between parking and being able to meet those responsibilities or being a part of the, I don't know, the, the lacrosse team. So, um, I just think it's very important that we keep in mind that some students, thirty dollars is a lot. Um, and that their reasons for parking there are, um, serious and significant responsibilities that contribute to their families. Thank you.
Thank you, Gianna. Jamie, you had another question?
Yeah, not, not a question, but, um, you know, I, I got, I guess I, I kind of disagree with the grounds. You know, you drive to a parking lot, I, I think you could probably use it for more, but my point is the following. We already signed off on a budget. If we don't collect this four thousand dollars, we are going to have to take it from somewhere. Been very fortunate as a school committee where we've always had a plush of funds at the end of every year. But that doesn't mean that next year will be that way. We just signed off on spending a ton of money last week. So just to remind everybody that we are, you, you're not just not charging this. You're taking Peter to pay Paul. You, you're taking from somewhere else in the budget. I know it's only four grand. But once you do this once, next will be all the other fees that we're collecting. Um, so you are taking from somewhere else within your budget to offset this four thousand dollars. So those budgets are already done, and we already spent quite a bit of the funds. I know they're coming from the federal government. But, you know, we've already been spending, uh, pretty regularly. This is just another means of spending by not collecting revenue that we already bargained for. So, just to remind everybody.
Thank you. Uh, uh, I see your hand, Suzie, but let me just respond real quickly. With fifteen thousand dollars already in the bank, uh, this year's four thousand wouldn't actually be a problem because it has to be earmarked. Unless we already have a design for spending the fifteen plus four more. Otherwise, it wouldn't become a problem. Sorry.
Completely, completely agree if you're looking at it from year to year, but, uh, obviously a revolving account. Yeah.
Right, go ahead.
Well, that's my question. Is this, has this already been, this credit of four thousand dollars, has it already been applied to the budget for next year?
We do not have any funds appropriated in twenty-two's budget out of this particular revolving account for.
So again, this would be something that's applied as a need arises versus it being a budgeted credit on the, in the budget.
It would be a request from the town to offset costs that they may be incurring. Or, uh, the school committee would take action to amend the budget to add funds from the revolving account through a provision in the twenty-two fiscal year.
Right, so it's, okay, so it's only used if needed. It is not planned for in terms of a, any sort of expenditure.
I love that parking fees got the most questions tonight. Like, a billion dollars on middle schools. Alright, I, I just have one more comment that I, I actually wanted to make. I think Maxim's point on the, uh, the principle of it, that the students are bearing the cost, are the students actually getting a benefit? And the reason I asked Tom about how much we get each year was wondering if, taking the extreme long view, that this money could be collected and collected and collected and collected, and then the problems of this parking lot could actually be fixed? Because the cost of it, it can't. I mean, I, I, when you told me how much it isn't, I realized it would take, that's why I said the very extreme long view, but go ahead, Tom.
I don't know that we bring in enough to really, uh, address specifically the turnaround that the students had proposed. Uh, even the curb cut at the end of the horseshoe was, uh, a substantial amount. I don't even know we got enough, we received a price on it. But it would take years and years, tens of years to collect the amount to, uh, to pay for those projects fully.
Yeah, that's what I realized after you mentioned it. Jamie, I think you have one, another comment?
Yeah, just two, two questions. I don't think anybody actually said the amounts, but the local towns, how much do they charge for parking?
I might have to defer to Maxim as I don't, I don't have that info with me, Jamie, and I haven't looked at it recently, Maxim. I don't know if you recall what local communities charge.
I, I don't, uh, I don't have, I can't find the article at this moment right now because we never published that one online. It's on paper somewhere. But I do remember.
I don't have a reliable, I don't have a reliable source, but I have somebody that goes to East Long Meadow that says it's just shy of two hundred dollars. So I don't know if that's true or not. They said like one eighty-five or something, so.
I know at Minutaway, it used to be eighty dollars and some surrounding schools, it was generally around fifty dollars. And then there are the extremes of over a hundred dollars as well.
And Ryan, what, e- exactly what you were thinking was what I was thinking. If you want to fund a project, make it a better place. Maybe we should be increasing the fees to be able to handle the amount of traffic we have in there to satisfy the, you know, the requests from multiple, uh, folks who've come here saying we've got to redesign the parking lot. I mean, it sounds like we're awfully low, uh, which we're very awfully low on all of our fees every time we look at them. Uh, no matter what you look at, maybe that's even another option too. I know that's not what we're talking about, but something to think about.
I hear you, but again, on the principle of it, it's being borne by students to, uh, fix an error that affects more people than the students. Suzie?
Yeah, and just to speak to, and I, I see Jamie's point, I see everybody's point. Um, I think to speak to the fees overall though, um, just from that standpoint, you know, the fees for athletics, the fees for preschool go towards funding a program. There's no program associated with the parking lot. There's no, there's no staffing associated with the parking lot. There's no parking attendance that we're paying for out there. And I, I feel like, um, it, it, they're, they're, it's apples and oranges compared to like preschool and the athletics. Because, you know, the athletics fees are going to offset, you know, and, and supplement and pay for, um, staffing and, and other needs like uniforms and all that stuff. Well, and there's fees on top of that as well for kids and families. But I feel like this is, this is a different kind of situation. And it is all sort of, you know, up to the students to pay, and there's no real program benefit from it.
I could just say one last point. I, 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 I wasn't insinuating that, Suzie, just so everybody follows. What I was saying is you have multiple programs, we collect multiple fees, you have multiple towns around us where many people don't pay athletic fees. So all I'm saying is what's next? With the athletic program being in here saying, hey, the two hundred and fifty thousand we collect in athletic fees, we don't want to do that anymore either, and we want you to take that from your budget. Um, you know, you, you have to, I'm saying, looking at holistically, whether it's right or wrong, why you're collecting it, whether you're getting a service or not, you're doing it. Um, you're collecting that money and you have been. Um, so, you know, I, I just, I'm just saying, look at it overall, not why, what, why you're collecting it.
Max?
Yeah, so I'm, I, I see the point that other people raise, uh, and I understand that. At the same time, I just feel, again, it's, uh, other people also use student parking lot. Uh, students need to get to school. Uh, like, I bike most of the days. Actually, I have a car, but I bike, uh, as much as possible. Um, but a lot of students, the way they, they get to school is by car. On days that I have work right after school, I do take my car. Um, and there are many other things that students benefit from, that they, most things that students benefit from, they don't pay for, for, and the town will pay for. It doesn't even come out of the school budget. For example, the trophy glass showcase that, uh, the, I was at the town meeting, uh, it was last weekend or two weekends ago, um, seventy-five thousand dollars that was given to that. Um, I think if there are improvements that are needed in the future, it could probably be worked through a similar process if there needs to be a curb cut or something of a sort. Uh, because once again, it's not just students that use that parking lot. Um, that's my two cents on it.
Thank you. Is anybody interested in wrapping this up and making a motion?
I move that the school committee eliminate the fee for student parking at Long Meadow High School.
Thank you. Thank you, Nick and Niamh. And further discussion? Any other comments or questions? Bronwyn?
I just wanted to say I really appreciate, uh, Maxim's input, um, and just explaining this to everybody that, uh, just the, the principle of the matter in this case. Um, uh, I think he did a great job of helping us see that, and I appreciate it.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? I'll call for a vote then. Bronwyn?
Yes.
Yeah?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Suzie?
Yes.
Uh, Nicole?
Yes.
Jamie?
No.
And yes for me. That is six to one that passes. We are now up to new business report on the use of ESSR funds.
So thank you. Uh, you'll recall at your last meeting, we had, uh, brought to you some recommendations on how we could apply the federal stimulus dollars that would be available to us. And, uh, we explained that we would, um, try to do some staffing and make some investments around the MTSS framework, the multi-tiered system of support framework. And at your, uh, May eleventh meeting, we all agreed that it would make sense to bring back to you some clarification on how we would apply, uh, the three content specialist positions that you had approved and authorized at, at your meeting. And so, um, we'd like to, uh, do that tonight, kind of bring some clarity on how those positions would be deployed. And at the, the committee had also encouraged us to think about a, a fourth position at the middle school. So it was to allow, uh, each middle school to have a, uh, English content, not content specialist. And so that's what we'd like to talk to you about tonight. So it's, uh, to explain how those positions might support our students in the coming year. And then also to make a recommendation to, um, ask you to authorize an additional content specialist position at the middle school. So if I could, I'll just, uh, do a quick screen share here if I could.
All right. So conceptually, what we had presented to you at your last meeting was to make some uh investments in the in the MTSS system that we know uh that if we're faithful to that, we can provide students with some, with the support and with the uh with the uh instruction that they'll need, particularly in the coming year. The MTSS framework is is fundamentally based on uh an emphasis on tiered instruction with an emphasis within that of ensuring that we have um high quality tier one, meaning general classroom instruction. And important to that is that we provide uh universal supports, universally designed lessons that are accessible to all learners that meet uh the needs of all learners, whether they're uh ready for additional challenge or they need additional support. And so uh tonight, just to talk a little bit about what the, how those positions would be uh deployed at the middle school in the coming year. So again, you had authorized at your last meeting uh three positions, whether it was going to be two ELA positions or one math position was uh still under consideration. But tonight, we would propose to you that we add one additional beyond what was authorized at the May eleventh school committee meeting. And so this would put us in a position to have uh one additional ELA uh specialist at um each middle school and one additional math uh teacher at each middle school as well. The the thought is that we would deploy uh these positions at tier one. In the case of the ELA position, we would want to uh embed this position um at at with a grade level team, one trimester at a time. So uh one, one trimester, the ELA specialist would work with the sixth grade, one trimester, they'd work with seventh grade, and the final trimester work with eighth grade. The uh the recommendation from our principals is to seek out a ELA specialist who has strong experience in writing. Uh um the plan would be that the individual would be embedded in uh classrooms that would co-teach and collaboratively work with teachers. Uh in the case of the LA ELA position, that they would work on uh developing aligned uh writing units in uh the core content areas. We we have a reasonable class size at the middle school, but if we were to deploy these positions, we would create the conditions for uh additional small group work with two highly qualified teachers in uh as as situations allow at the middle schools. And the hope is that, again, these positions would exist to serve students of all ability levels that um the teachers would be able to create that, the the small group supports that would allow us to stretch and challenge students who are ready for that, but also to ensure that uh we're accelerating learning for those who need to uh get up to speed on essential grade level standards. We think that the position would promote uh the alignment of curriculum and instruction, particularly with regard to our writing expectations at at the middle school. In the case of the the math position, uh we would be in a position to um have one additional math specialist at each building. Uh similarly, this individual would be involved in co-teaching math classes. In this case, it it wouldn't necessarily be organized along a a trimester schedule, but it would be based on, it's like we're losing some light out there, uh based on the uh the needs that we identify for students, based on uh universal screening data, based on any informative and some of the assessment data that is available to the teachers. Uh the the math teachers would be available to co-teach in math classes across uh all three grades. You're really deploying these people where they, where they can, uh where they're, where they're needed most, based on the needs that we identify through the assessments that I mentioned. So for your consideration tonight is uh an additional uh one point oh FTE uh to allow us to staff the middle schools with an additional content specialist uh in math and ELA um across the two schools. So happy to answer any questions you might have and and um thanks Sue for working closely with uh with me and the principals to develop a model that we think will really position us well to support students as we look towards uh the twenty-one, twenty-two school year.
Questions? And reminder, as the screen is being shared, I can't see you all, so you may have to unmute yourself and let me know that you have a question. I know we talked about this in a previous meeting, but you may have a more, Bronwyn?
Uh not a question, just a comment. Um I do appreciate the administration revisiting this and adding one ELA and one math at each school. I thought one for both schools was was a little bit much, so um I'm very happy to see that. And as far as the ELA positions go, I'm really hoping they have some extra time to focus on the writing. Does a writing experience require? So it seems like that is going to be a focus. Um I'm very excited about that. Thanks.
Thank you, Superintendent and Sue and everybody that worked on making this happen. Um Superintendent, you were talking about the the trimester and the ELA person working with sixth grade, then seventh grade, then eighth grade. I'm just wondering if there's going to be any kind of flexibility with that, just because I know some of us have raised before, myself included kind of the the focus on the the eighth grade ELA curriculum right now, and I feel like could the eighth grade benefit from that first to set the tone for the rest of the year since it's such an important year?
Yeah, and it was more illustrative to talk about the the rollout with the trimesters. It could very well be that principals, when they sit down with their ELA teachers and our ELA coordinator and work with Sue, they they may very well come to the conclusion that it's best to deploy the person at eighth grade and trimester one and seventh grade and then sixth grade. Um but we we do know that, you know, kind of ensuring, giving kids a strong uh foundational experience in writing is important to their success in high school. So it was uh an area that the principals came back to us and said that they they felt it's an area of need. It's there's some growth that we could experience, that our students could experience in that area. So how it would be rolled out along each trimester, I would probably, you know, want to go back to the principals to find out how they would want to schedule that based on student need. And I should also mention, in the case of the the math position, that um we also would want to be in a position potentially to use this to offset any large classes that um develop at the middle school, particularly in the area of math. Right now, uh the student placement decisions are happening with our uh guidance staff at the middle school and with parents. So we don't know exactly how large our our pre-algebra classes will be, and so we'll we'll want to take a look at that. And if necessary, we it would make sense to use a portion of one of the positions at WMS to offset um the bubble class in eighth grade. That's that that larger group that is making their way through our schools.
Great, thank you, Superintendent.
Any other questions? Go on, Suzie.
Um I'll just make, I'll just make the same comment. I'm appreciative of the the attention to this. I think um it it couldn't come at a better time, especially, you know, as we know, there's going to be a a variety of needs um moving into next year, especially at our middle schools. And um so I I appreciate that, you know, you've heard from a lot of, you know, from the school, from the committee, from the community, and so I thank you for your attention to this. I think it's 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 necessary and and definitely valued.
Thank you. And lastly, I I think I'd echo that. I think a lot of districts are doing the same thing, identifying where you need help and then using the federal money to solve the problems that the pandemic has made apparent for us, so. Thank you. There's a possible motion if somebody would like to make that?
I just note before someone makes a possible motion that it really ought to reflect uh the uh authorize the use of federal stimulus funds to establish uh one additional middle school position beyond what was authorized on May eleventh. Tom, is that, would you say that that's appropriate? Okay.
Suzie, you want to try that?
Yep. I move that the school committee approve the use of federal stimulus funds to establish the middle school pos- the one middle school position beyond what was previously authorized, as recommended by the superintendent and the administrative team.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? So now I'll call for a vote. Bronwyn?
Yes.
Gianna?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Suzie?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
And yes for me, the motion passed with seven zero. Now we get the Challenge Success.
Thank you. Uh Challenge Success uh may be an organization that committee is familiar with. We had uh partnered with them a couple of years ago where they came in and offered a presentation on the well-balanced child to uh parents, to staff, and I think they work with some student groups as well. And it was well-received. I've had some opportunities to go to some of the trainings that uh Challenge Success has sponsored. Essentially, they they work with school districts to uh help communities as a whole arrive at kind of a a newer definition of student success, one that takes into account the needs of the whole child, one that uh takes into account uh the factors that that make them uh balanced and forward-looking and focused on their own growth and development rather than, let's say, more narrow, being more narrowly focused on on achieving grades or doing school. And so at your last meeting, uh we had presented the school climate data survey and there was some uh conversation, I think, around sort of doing a deeper dive on some of the the wellness um questions that were asked on that student survey and in particular Bronwyn and I talked about the the potential for the Challenge Success survey, and this, there's some information in your packet on that. Uh tonight, there's a possible motion for you to to consider authorizing the use, uh applying ESSR funds to allow us to um complete those Challenge Success surveys next year with students, staff, and parents. And so there's an explanation of the survey, and there was also a link to a a video that uh the Challenge Success rep put together for us. So that is for your consideration this evening. Thank you, but if um, well, I'll leave it there. Have any questions or happy to, happy to help out, and I know it's something.
Questions? Bronwyn?
Thanks. Uh one thing I really like about um the Challenge Success survey is that they include the faculty and staff and also the parents. And oftentimes, I don't feel like we hear from the faculty and staff as a whole and from all of the parents as often as we would like. So the Challenge Success does provide those additional options, which I think is very exciting. And I do appreciate all the work that Shelley, Warren and her team do um regarding the data they presented to us last week. This is just a little bit different. Um I think we'll be able to utilize both to hope, to help drive uh decisions we make in the future. This is very exciting and I'm in full support of it.
Kevin?
My computer doesn't want me to talk anymore. Um I I agree with Bronwyn completely. I think this is very exciting. One thing I was hoping, Marty, you could could address. It, this came up in the the equity audit discussion, was the issue of making sure we get a truly representative sample of all of the groups that we're talking about. And I think now more than ever, that's critically important. So if we have questions about students of color or uh, you know, different, different demographics, whatever demographic you're interested in, we need to make sure we're getting enough responses so that those are meaningful. And I guess I'd I'd really like to understand how we're going to make sure we get enough responses across the spectrum so that we're seeing the information we need, not just from our majority white students.
So I'd say in the case of students and staff, we could make it a requirement easily enough. And our parents, I've found in the past, are eager respondents to surveys. So I'd agree. I think whatever survey data we collect, we want to be in a position to disaggregate it and look at results for for different groups, so.
Uh I'm gonna ask a quick question that I'll call on you, yeah? So in the the, it says perceptions of student experience. So will they be able to provide you with, say, comparative graphs regarding similar questions? So the teachers feel a particular way about the student experience as compared to the students' feelings about their experience?
See the individual?
I'd have to come back to you with a a definite answer on that. Uh I don't know if the questions are identical, you know, across parents, students and staff. So I think I'd want to get some more information for you on that.
Gianna?
Thank you, uh Ryan. Thank you, everybody who was part of bringing this this option forward. Um I I think twelve thousand dollars is too much money to pay somebody to um facilitate a survey for us. I think the fact that Shelley, Warren and team brought forth such valuable data to us, um working with LPS staff and administrators um without it costing twelve thousand dollars um is a good sign that we could probably do this with LPS staff again without costing twelve thousand dollars. We just heard Superintendent say that parents and guardians um are usually pretty engaged with the survey process. I would worry too, to uh Kevin's question, if we spend twelve thousand dollars and we don't get the, you know, participation from students, that would make it worth twelve thousand. Um for the past couple of years, I've been working with Springfield College doctoral students, who have been putting together some pretty um intensive surveys and focus groups and research studies, um thousand dollars. So I see the value in collecting this information. Um I was part of that CLEE committee, so um I also see Kevin again to your point, wanting to make sure that we're getting a good representation from all of the different groups in our school system. I just don't think we need to spend twelve thousand dollars to do it.
Are you, Gianna? Any other comments or questions, Jamie?
I just have a question. Uh somebody said it really quick in the beginning, but could you clarify? Where were we taking this from federal stimulus fund? Where where's this money coming from?
The uh the proposal would the proposal proposal would be to use the federal stimulus funds to cover the cost of the survey. And it's a, as part of the ESSR requirements, we do have to make a commitment to uh social emotional learning, so it would cover that part of the ESSR requirement. Got it. So uh I'm glad Maxim's not on here or Pay Yellaby for spending this money. Um I think Shelley and did an amazing job last week, um or two weeks ago. I thought the data was amazing. Um I think they're going to be, you know, obviously the ones that they need, um a lot of
you know, obviously, the ones that didn't need um a lot of the additional, you know, change that we're looking for and analysis that we're looking for from from this group. Um, I think not doing this um and getting that third party in there to really come back to us and say, you should be doing this, this, and this. Um, you know, from a very reputable organization, I think, is kind of, you know, I I it's the equivalent of what we've been doing with the middle schools for the last twenty years. Every group that gets in front of us. So yeah, we'll take care of it next year. We'll take care of it next year. Um, until we get somebody that's able to say, hey, you should look at this. You should look at the way you're organized. It's very hard to look at yourself and Shelley's wonderful. We're wonderful. But to look at yourself and have that self-reflection, say, yeah, I I'm really not that great at this uh versus a group on the outside. I I think twelve grand is is a great spend for what we're talking about and what's going on socially around the world. Um, I have no problem with the twelve grand. Sorry, Max.
Yeah, a comment and a question. Uh, I was definitely impressed looking at the video, how user-friendly the data manipulation looks to be. And and I hope that we're all going to be able to do that. And I hope that all of the community is going to be able to do that. I I hope it's a community resource where people not just this committee can manipulate the data. And to me, that's why it's worth spending the money. Because we can do lots of surveys ourselves, but it's really hard to then present the data in a way that people can dig down in what they're most interested in and learn about what they want. And from what they showed on that video, it looked super easy to do that. So I hope that that's the case, that everybody in the community can can play around with that and figure out what they want. And I guess the question I have, because I don't think personally, I have no idea how much it costs to do surveys. If if somebody could enlighten us as to like benchmarking what these things generally cost, that would be really helpful.
Suzie?
Only because I've worked with this organization before, I know that they use the Stanford Research Arm to do all of the analysis. Um, so they are paying multiple people to run this data through to generate, you know, like some of the 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 components, then to meet with. There there's something else that goes on here, like they're going to meet team here at the school. Um, not just like, sometimes they just do it for an hour, but when you, the the four thousand dollars also pays for the preparation for that meeting, for like identifying the trends and the big um, you know, pieces that they would need to do. So they do this with schools all over the country. Um, and so that that's where that's what a lot of a lot of it goes into. You know, you can pay and have panorama surveys, you know, custom-made, but they don't do the same kind of in-depth work and stay with you to sort of extrapolate and figure out like where are your trends and what do you need to kind of work on. I hope that helps.
Gianna?
Um, as a school counselor, so I'm definitely focused on social, emotional, behavioral health and wellness of my students, and I work very closely with the families. Um, again, I I understand the importance of collecting this kind of data. Um, but I think superintendent or somebody just mentioned that this would come out of the social, emotional pot of funds from the Esser. And so now I'm extra worried about spending this kind of money from that area versus spending twelve thousand dollars on actual services and resources in social emotional support.
Just to clarify, it would help us fulfill the obligation that we have to commit a certain amount of the Esser funds towards SEL. It wouldn't, there's no cap on how much of the Esser funds can be dedicated towards supporting students' social emotional learning. So it wouldn't necessarily crowd out other opportunities, but it would help us meet the obligation. That's part of the Esser application.
Yeah, thank you for that, superintendent. I I I do remember that from from the discussion, but I also remember we didn't have a clear line on how much money we're going to be spending on social emotional. So without that clear line already and talking about twelve thousand dollars as part of that bucket, I I just, I'm I, okay. Thanks, superintendent.
Anybody else? Nicole?
Thank you. Um, I understand the ten thousand dollar minimum commitment for social, emotional and mental health um for students. I'm wondering, I know that this is meant to be sort of the, i- if I'm understanding correctly, and maybe to clarify for any community members watching as well, this is meant to be sort of foundation for determining what other supports might be needed and what kind of programming we would best be suited to offer. Do we have any um examples or thoughts so far about what those supports might look like or what that programming might look like? Or would that be determined solely after the results came back?
So remember, well, go ahead, Sue. Yeah, please.
Hello. Um, we're just starting to explore programs and look at the challenge success survey and other surveys is really giving us our foundational um data provide tier one instruction in this area. So I think that we are really looking to push this as the social emotional teaching into the classrooms. And um, we need some data to go by on that. Uh, we took it a PD with one or just kind of an overview, but not ready to kind of say this is the best one yet. You know, looking at programs and how they might fit within what we're currently doing. Thanks.
Anyone else?
Jamie? I just have some question because I think I understood it last week. Um, so in regards to survey two is they're they my understanding is they're going to come back with tactical things too. I mean, there's a lot of, you know, conversation around homework. There's too much homework. The classes weren't right. They're going to come back and look at us organizationally saying, yeah, you're doing this really well, but you might want to relook at how you're organized here, how you place kids. Um, you know, what whatever it may be, there's that side of it too, that they do, correct? I I heard it right last week. Okay. Everyone's yet saying yes, so.
Any other questions or comments? It's a possible, uh, Gianna, go ahead.
Sue, so did you just say that you're looking at other possible surveys too, or?
Right, yeah, not surveys, potential um programs that can be taught in a tier one as a general educator. So we know like responsive classroom, those kinds of things. But um, based on the challenge survey, the success, the challenge data, we can think about programs that hit specific needs or, you know.
If there are no more questions, there's a motion if anyone is interested.
I move that the school committee authorize the expense of twelve thousand dollars for challenge success surveys for students, staff, and parents in this twenty twenty-one, twenty-two school year from the Esser funds.
Is there a second?
Sue, I'll do a second.
Kevin's still struggling with his computer. Just try in there. I can tell behind that mask. Is there any other question or discussion? Gianna?
Yeah, I just want to say it's very rare when I um find myself in uh not thinking along the same lines as as my committee mates. Um, I I just want to be very clear that I do believe in the value of data like this. Um. I just think that we have super talented people and um the brain power and the capacity to um get it done ourselves. But um, I I again, I just want to make clear that I appreciate the, you know, the interest in collecting this kind of data and using it as a foundation for programs. You know, I I think maybe it's more for me, just maybe the timing that we have to use money that I think could be used more for those concrete services now versus down the road. But um, thank you.
Any other discussion? Then I'll call for a vote. Bronwyn?
Yes.
Gianna?
No.
Kevin? Oh, you're unmuted for a second.
Yep.
And we heard you. Suzie?
I'm staying.
Um, Nicole?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
And yes for me. Uh, next one up, the addendum to the LHS Educational Opportunities Book.
So in a year where we have tried to extend flexibility to support students' growth and progress, uh, bring to you a recommendation uh for an addendum to the Educational Opportunities Book for Long Middle High School. Uh, just some quick background. Current practice is that uh, students may uh attend a summer school experience to replace the uh lowest grade that they've, the lowest quarter grade that they've experienced if they fail the class. And so the idea is that if you replace one of the quarters that with with a successful summer school experience, that it would be enough to allow you to uh pass a class for the year and recover that credit. What the high school is proposing uh to you tonight is to amend the Educational Opportunities Book to extend some additional flexibility. And uh, what what we would propose is that students could uh recover credit by passing a full summer school course that the principal determines to be the equivalent to the class that the student failed. So rather than just replacing a single quarter, if the principal is convinced that the summer school experience is robust enough, if it's if it's lengthy enough, if it's the equivalent of a long middle high class that we would use, we would allow the student to replace credit uh gaining experience with their with the failed class from the twenty twenty-one school year. So this would be in place just until August of twenty-one. And again, it's just to extend some additional flexibility to students who have struggled in this challenging year. It's to give students a chance to replace uh an entire course. Again, if the principal determines that it is the equivalent of an LHS class.
First question would be, Marty, how would that be determined? Would we be doing it here? Is it an online platform? What are the options?
I think we've seen more, we've we've learned that there's more and more options out there. Uh, and there's more online credit recovery options for students. Um. Some of the area school districts that are are looking at kind of lengthier uh summer school experiences for kids that are sort of your your typical um uh short experience. Uh, and then I think there might even be some students that would pursue a a class at a local community college. So if they if they did that, if they took one of those robust experiences and if they had prior approval, uh, the principal would extend the the credit to those students who pass those summer experiences. So it it really, you know, I mean, that one of the silver linings of the pandemic has been that it's taught us to think differently about how students can acquire credit. And um, this is encouraging. I'd say that that and it it might be something that could influence our practice uh in future years as well.
Nicole?
I'm wondering if there is a number of classes that could be recovered this way? Or a limit to how many courses could be recovered?
The principal did not propose to put a cap on that, but I suppose the cap could be a practical one where the students haven't only had so much time in their summer months to to complete the work.
Kevin? How many students might do this?
It's available. I do, I think there there was a we've seen more students who are looking at completing the year with with Fs, not achieving credit. And we're not alone in that. I think we've seen reports on that across the country. I don't have the information on the the number of students that would be able to access this, though. So, yeah, I don't think.
I don't, they don't have the numbers yet either. So they have a list and they're working at the high school really hard to get those students to make up their work right now to pass. And so we're hoping it's a really small number.
Gianna?
Thank you, Ryan. Um, superintendent for giving me, because I don't know a lot about the whole accreditation process and all that, but anything in here that could be like, you know, like the accreditation of the high school AP classes, honors classes, weighted versus unweighted, like could any of that have some kind of impact on or could this have some kind of impact on those systems and processes?
I I don't anticipate that being the case. Um. In fact, I think it would be something that might enhance our standing. And it's it's really not unusual for principals to make these equivalency decisions. It's you know, that's something I I remember as a high school principal myself, that that was something that I was asked to do and review on a regular basis as students come to us with experiences when they when they move into town perhaps, or they've taken some online class. And so it's not unusual for principals to have to make these equivalency decisions.
Thank you for that. I I I didn't know that. That's that's it's a good little good little power to have, I guess.
I have one other question. If uh the principal finds an online program that is deemed uh rigorous enough, obviously, it's not part of this request, but in the future, would there be possibly an idea of looking at doing the credit recovery against a very low F? And one thing I know that I've mentioned before when I asked about the NIES report is the whole idea of the grading system. An F is fifty-nine points and everything else is ten points. So F is very large. So if somebody has a very low F, they kind of lose hope on the mathematics of at the end, I'm going to have a passing grade. But if you have, that is rigorous enough, they can start during, say, the second market period working on that, say, they got a ten. Didn't get much time. They got a ten for the particular quarter, but they can do enough work to get that up to a reasonable level. And then you don't have a year of I have no shot. Why should I even bother? Then I'll just go to such, they're doing it as they go. You don't even need summer school because they are doing equivalent work. Again, if the principal were to find a program, and um, I know that there are some that he deems uh rigorous enough.
Yeah, I I think it's an excellent idea. And I think some of that might even be happening this year too, if you can help me out.
It's more happening on the accelerated end as as opposed to the credit credit recovery, but we have students who are taking classes that we are not offering outside of school on a that the principal will accept, but it
I I think your your idea, your proposal is a good one. I think we we want to make sure that kids don't feel defeated a quarter of the way halfway into the year. And so if we can find, you know, in fact, we're in the planning stages of how to implement the uh intervention positions that you've authorized that we could look at is how could there be some work going on throughout the year to avoid kids getting into that position where they they feel like it's a hopeless loss cause.
I do. Suzie?
No, it's not the topic. It, um, there's lots of research out there about the detriment of a zero-based grading system. And um, I thank you for, this shines a light on it, obviously. Um, and so I'm hopeful that at some point along the way, the um, you know, perhaps the school administration can come forward with some you know, perhaps the school administration can come forward with some recommendations on revising the grading policy um, to, at the very least, a lot of schools across the country have made the move to eliminating zeros, um, to uh, also reducing the zero to fifty-nine um, from that mathematical um, component, at least as a start. So I just had to say it, thank you, at least as a start. Um, so I just had to say it, thank you.
I think, good, quick response, I think the, the pandemic and I think our experience with developing the BOG, I think it's caused us to rethink some of those basic assumptions. So I hope would be that we can fold that into the, into the process of, of rethinking how we uh, measure student proficiency and growth.
So if there are no other questions, there's a possible motion.
I move, oops, I'm on the wrong page. I move on the recommendation of the superintendent and Long Meadow High School administration that the school committee approve the addendum to the Long Meadow High School Educational Opportunities booklet as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. Brown.
Yes.
Cianna?
Yes.
Kevin? Yes.
Suzie? Nicole?
Yes.
Jamie? Yes. Yeah, uh, yes for me, motion S seven zero. There's another possible motion.
I move that the school committee meet in an executive session pursuant to Massachusetts General law chapter thirty A, section twenty-one A, purpose two, to conduct a strategy session in preparation with collective bargaining with unit A. And purpose seven, consideration of release of executive session minutes of previous meetings to reconvene into open session.
There's.
Second.
Again, this is a, uh, the move is school committee meet and executive session pursuant to Mass General law chapter thirty A, section twenty-one A, purpose two, to conduct a strategy session, preparation with collective bargaining with unit A. And purpose seven, consideration of release of executive session minutes of previous meetings to reconvene into open session. This requires a roll call vote. Is there any discussion before we vote? Seeing none, Brown.
Yes.
Yeah.
Kevin?
Yes.
Suzie?
Yes.
Uh, Nicole?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
And yes for me. We're going to executive session and we will be back. Come back, we're calling our meeting back into session. Marty, can you give us a summary?
Sure, thank you. Pleased to present to the committee for a public consideration on memorandum of agreement between the school committee and the Long Meadow Education Association. This is a collective bargaining, it's a successor collective bargaining agreement that would be in effect between the committee and unit A for a one-year period from September first, twenty twenty-one through August thirty-first, twenty twenty-two. And so this memorandum of agreement is the result of a very spirited but collaborative negotiations session with our partners in the LEA. And for the community at home, for the public, I'd like to summarize some of the key provisions, key provisions of this agreement. The, in terms of compensation, the agreement calls for a one and a half percent increase to be applied to all steps and lanes to the unit A salary schedule effective September first, twenty twenty-one. The agreement also calls for every unit A member active on pay to receive a one-time payment of five hundred dollars. And the agreement also calls for the modification of the school year, the twenty-one, twenty-two school year from one hundred and eighty-five days for unit A staff to one hundred and eighty-fourth academic year for students. It's important to remember that. And wanna sort of publicly thank committee, particularly Suzie Bell, who's the chair of that negotiation subcommittee for working through this process. Thank the, our partners at the LEA for again engaging in a very spirited but collaborative approach. I think the LEA recognized some of the constraints and challenges that the committee was facing in terms of the FY twenty-two budget and also the long-term fiscal position of the town of Long Meadow. So with that, I think the agreement is certainly a fiscally responsible arrangement. It is a one-year agreement that also includes some, some housekeeping changes, some language isn't really noteworthy at this time. But it does, I think, position us for probably negotiations that will commence late in the fall for a successor agreement to this one-year agreement. But more importantly, I think it positions us for continued success here in Long Meadow Public Schools. It ensures that we have a competitive salary schedule, one that will help us attract and retain, continue to attract and retain really talented staff. And I think it also recognizes some of the fiscal challenges that the town is facing long-term that have been discussed by this committee and by the SLAC board and by the tax ceiling task force. So I'm really pleased that we were able to bring this together. And again, appreciative of the negotiations team. Suzie was the chair, Ryan and Nicole were also on the negotiating team as well, and it requires a lot of sacrifice, a lot of time. But I'm pleased that we came to an agreement that, that is, reflects the collaborative relationship that we have with our partners at the LEA. So, thank you.
Yes. Kevin?
Yes.
Suzie?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Yes for me, that motion passes seven to zero. And there's another possible.
I move that the school committee adjourn the May twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-one school committee meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? And I will call for a vote. Jamie?
Yes. Turn me off.
Nicole?
Yes.
I'm messing with all of you. Suzie?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Bradman?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Yes for me. We are for doing. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good night.